All right, it's April 1st, a little after seven o'clock, and I'm gonna call the city council meeting to order. Would you please join me in the flag salute?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All members of the council are here, with the exception of Councilor McDonald is excused. And with that, is there any additions to the agenda?
No.
Nope. Any declarations of ex-party contact, conflict of interest, bias, etc. I hear none. This is an opportunity for a public comment. Melanie, anybody submit public comments cards? No? Anybody wish to give a public comment? I gotta stop banging on the mic, sorry. All right, that leads us to consent agenda for March 18th, both the council work session minutes and the regular session minutes. What would the council like to do?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilor Patty.
Councilor Patty.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, moving second to present the agenda as submitted. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Good, Julia? All right, that leaves us with something that we've worked very hard for to promote over the last six months at least. And that is the If I Were Mayor contest winners. And so I'm gonna read a little excerpt here, I think, from what we got going on, so bear with me. The Oregon Mayors Association sponsors a contest every year that asks young people what they would do if I were mayor. This year, the city of Stateon, Sublimity, and Almsville got together to encourage the students within our area to think about that question and submit an entry into the contest. The categories were elementary, they had to do a poster, middle school, they had to do an essay, and high school, they had to do a video essay. While we did not receive a high school entry, we received several entries for the other categories. The mayors all met to review all the entries and help one another select a winner. In addition to this, I also asked for input from city staff, and this was not an easy decision. The elementary school submittals had themes about drugs, speeding, honoring pets, supporting pet shelters, cleaning up trash to protect oceans and streams, fixing potholes, and enhancing the dog park. It was pretty big stuff. The entry I selected that had the most ideas included and was very eye-catching, and that was submitted by Noah Ort. I will say that one of the other entries had a fantastic idea for a pet parade, and we were looking to make that happen in reality, so maybe this summer we'll have a pet parade. The middle school entries were essays and allowed for much more details and insights. Topics in the essays included homelessness, public safety, street improvements, and fiscal accountability. It also included a lot of fun ideas like holding concerts in the park, encouraging volunteerism, having more food options, we always liked that. Having more parades, fun runs, Councilor Patty, fun runs, and community events. I think my favorite idea was to hold meetings once a month on the 14th, because nothing happens on the 14th, except in February, when we can meet on the 15th. The entry I selected has the winner spoke about what it takes to be a good leader and the importance of community participation. Their final paragraph states, "In conclusion, the role of mayor is both a privilege and an extreme responsibility, a great opportunity to be able to serve the community with integrity, empathy, and vision. By embracing the principles of community engagement, sustainable development, foundation improvement, and smart decision-making, our mayor can pave a path towards and a bright future of the city and the people living in it. Through collaborative efforts and leadership, bold initiatives, and a dedicated commitment to the common good, the mayor has the power to uplift, encourage, inspire positive change, and leave a lasting legacy of progress, improvement, and prosperity." And that comes from the wise and inspiring person named Abigail Wildin. So fantastic job there, Abigail. With that, we have some awards for you, so if you want to come up and earn your award, grab your award with me, or I'll come over there.
If people want to do a photo with the mayor, we can... Noah, if you want to come up, and I realized I misspelled his last name. So I will fix that. I will fix that. But you can at least take a picture.
Julia, why don't you tell them what the awards are?
So the elementary school poster winner gets a lovely certificate signed by... The mayor actually still needs to sign this. The mayor and a $50 Visa gift card to use at your discretion. And then the middle school essay winner gets an equally wonderful certificate and a $100 gift card. So congratulations.
Yes, congratulations. And then, we're gonna submit these to the Oregon Mayors Association. By the end of the week, staff will do that for me. And that will go to the Oregon Mayors Association for them to determine whether or not you advance to the state round, which would be in K Falls in June, I think, so stay tuned for that. But come on up and get your hard earned award.
Noah and Abigail, do you want to do them one at a time?
Sure.
Noah, why don't you come up? We'll have you come up in a second, sorry. You can hold your poster up, actually, if you want.
Well, he has his poster.
Why don't you bring that up there? Look at that.
That's awesome.
Hold it up there now, Robert. Look at that, that's a great job.
You get $50 for this. Be happy.
All right, you guys.
$50 this time.
Yeah, very cool, there you go.
All right, smile, guys.
Sorry.
And then Abigail.
Abigail, thank you for participating. Awesome. Good job, congratulations.
Mom might want to be taking a picture, too. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilor.
There's just one thing I wanted to... There's just one point of disagreement I had with Abigail that I really wanted to...
I'm not sure I'm gonna let you.
I think it was a phenomenal... Like, I think you're ready to be mayor, like, actually probably better equipped than I am to be on council, for sure. Although you do say that you're not for Chick-fil-A coming to Stateon, and I do have to say, I just... That's the one thing I just want you to change your opinion on, that's it. I'm pro Chick-fil-A. That's the only disagreement.
All good, well, very good, and thank you again for participating, and thank you for doing the entries, awesome to see. I think, what was our total entry altogether? I think we had like a dozen or so, just for Stateon. Between all three cities, I think we had close to 30-ish, or maybe more. So the other cities will be announcing next week during their council meetings, that's my understanding, so thank you again.
Mr. Mayor, I just... I want to say a special thanks to the North San Antonio School District and various private schools in the area that I tried to coordinate this with. I just wanted to thank you guys for getting the word out there. Definitely had more participation this year, so thank you so much.
Yes, absolutely. Last year, we tried this and we had zero submissions, so it's a great improvement. And we, as a... Whether this happens through the OMA or not, next year, the three cities out here, Sublimity, myself, and Almsville, ourselves, and Almsville will continue the process. So we'll have another chance next year. So thank you, everyone, that submitted it. And to the folks that didn't get selected, there will be some acknowledgement coming your way.
Yes.
Awesome. Public hearing, there is no public hearing tonight. That leaves us with Resolution... General Business, Resolution 1097 for 2024 Street Maintenance Project Construction Contract Award. Lance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This evening, I bring before you Resolution 1097. It's the award of a construction contract to One Way Trigger for the 2024 Street Maintenance Program project. It's that time of year, we're gonna be doing... This is for slurry seals. And I won't go through the background information, we've gone through that just about every meeting we've talked about in the last couple of months. But we put a contract out to bid. We had five or six bidders. I think, we have them right here, we had four, excuse me. Three of them from out of state, California. And the low bidder was from California. You can see there what streets will be slurry sealing, we'll be doing some crack sealing as well on those streets. You can see it's about 21, 20,000, near feet of crack seal, and additional 22,000 square yards of type 2 slurry seal. We'll be digging out about 45 cubic yards of subgrade failure before we put it back together and slurry seal. We received the bids, they were from California, three of them, so we reached out to our friends over at GRI. It happens to be Lindsay, one of the consultants we use quite regularly. She's an expert in this field, she sits on some national boards, and she actually knows this company. She gave them a favorable recommendation. So us, as a staff, are recommending that we award that contract to One Way Trigger in the amount of $169, 663, 25. And with that, I'll answer any questions that you have.
Council, any questions for Lance?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Patty.
Yeah, I was just curious if Marion County had approached you about any cost-sharing agreements for any other additional roads to further how far our dollar can go on this.
Nope, not this year, Counselor.
Bummer. Thanks.
Councilor.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Just to follow up to that, these are all, like, city streets.
Oh, absolutely.
So Lance, on the index, what ranking would these streets have right now?
Anywhere from a six to an eight or nine, somewhere in there. This is the first treatment of maintenance that you put down in a street, so they don't go below where we have to start doing overlays. So we go out and we take care of these roads, it's gonna give us five to seven years extra on these roads, so we're not having to do mill and overlays. First treatment, if you want to put down.
And Lance, I think you're referring maybe to the Pacer Index as opposed to the... Cause six or eight, probably.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, they're good, they're in good...
Seven years of my career here, we use some ironic insignificant scale called the Pacer Scale. PCI is closer to a 65 to a 90, somewhere in there, these streets are.
So they're basically in good condition, we're just maintaining them, correct?
They're in good condition. We don't want to go any further south on these numbers, otherwise we're gonna be talking about a mill and overlay, which is probably four or five times as much money to do this amount of work.
Yeah, that's why I asked, Lance. I appreciate you doing this. I think, I still think we're gonna have to do a better job at communicating why we're doing this.
I would be very... I would look forward to any kind of recommendations that the council has for me on that. There's different types of maintenance. I'm not sure how we go out with the slurry seal and we try, I mean, communicating with the public. There's only so many of these streets that we have to do every year, slurry seal. We don't have to do a whole bunch. So communicating that and trying to get input for those, and we only have maybe seven or eight streets, I'm not sure what we're gonna gain by that, but I'll take any kind of recommendations that you have.
And I'll also add, we are still, we're working on a significant outreach campaign. We've got a presentation that's almost finalized, that kind of gets into that explanation of maintenance, slurry seal, why we do that versus the mill and overlay, and we're calling it a Streets 101, kind of explaining that level of detail, so people understand that. And then sort of building into the budget conversation and how we're prioritizing, and then ultimately into the CIP priorities and opportunities for public input on projects, which projects. So we're working on it, and I know I've been saying that for a few meetings now.
If that is what you're referring to, I could have said that. We are working towards that. We're putting, pulling a lot of people in to do this, because we want to do a good job upfront. Because if we don't, then we go out there with some bad communication, and then it's even worse than we are now. So we're working on putting something together that we think, it's gonna be a two-part series, that we think will help educate our citizens. And this just happens to be the first project we know. We have Ida Street coming up, I think we talked about that already. And after that, we will be coming forward. I'm not scheduling any more work until we get you folks on board and we determine how we're gonna do that. But I want to proceed with the streets that we'd had planned last fiscal year, so we can get it done.
Okay.
And then we'll move forward after we have those presentations.
Okay, and that's what I'm asking. I just want to make sure that there's a distinction between being preventative, and what's this cases here, right?
Yes.
Versus being reactive to those folks that have been waiting for how many years for their street to be addressed?
Absolutely, and we'll have to talk about the dollars and how we get those dollars to fix those streets, because they're very expensive. Mr. Mayor.
Councilor.
So when would these, if this was approved, when would this take place, the summer, or... We'll have to talk to the contractor. So slurry seal is a little different animal, because most of these companies, they work the entire west coast. They'll come up to do California, they'll do Northern California, Oregon, Washington, and that's all they do is slurry seals, because it's a very unique situation, very unique equipment to do that. So they'll just go and they'll do an entire state. So once this is awarded, we'll be contacting them to schedule that. It could be before, we'd like to get it done before July 1, because it's this fiscal year. I can't guarantee that. Okay, so this is on, already on the budget? This is for this year, this fiscal year. And that's what we're pushing for, that is correct. Okay, that was my next question. Okay, thanks.
So I had some quick... Curious about the bid requirements, there is no bid requirement for local?
No, there is not. In fact, I reached out to our city attorney regarding that, since three of them were from California. And the way the ORS reads is that if they have, if California, for example, puts restrictions on Oregon contractors going down there in bidding, like, it used to be where they would put 5% added cost to an Oregon bidder in California. We would have to do the same, we reciprocate on their bids, and wherever they lie, they lie. In this case, even 5%, if we were to do... We don't have one, number one, anymore. But if we did that, if it was still 5%, they would still be the low bidder. And that's how you take care of that.
Thank you. Anybody else? I missed the opportunity for a public comment. Does anyone have any public comment on this topic? Doesn't sound like it. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Gugilio.
Yeah, I would move to adopt Resolution Number 1097.
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilor Patty, I second that motion.
Moved in second to adopt Resolution 1097. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lance. That leaves us to Resolution Number 1098, fiscal year 2425, fee schedule, staff report with Mr. Brand.
Good evening, James Brand, the Finance Director for the City of Stateon. And do have Resolution 1098, this is the fee schedule for next year. So these are the fees proposed that we're building the budget on. This is a little bit different practice than former years. We'd like to approve these fees before we approve the budget, instead of at the same time. It just helps us put the budget together with these assumptions in place. We can change the fees later, we still have time, but it helps us in the planning. So this fee schedule, there's a single document containing all the city's charges, including the fees on the residents' utility bills, as well as many optional services that the city provides, from public works, planning, library, the pool, the city hall, and so on. And these fees will go into effect July 1st. Now, for ease of comparing the fees to last year, we have Attachment A, which is just a condensed version that only shows those fees that changed from last year, and also showing some fees that were not posted on the fee schedule the previous year as well. So there, there's always a section on these resolutions for fiscal impact. Well, this one has a huge fiscal impact, obviously. The majority of the city's income is from this fee schedule, so these are the charges that will provide our funds. Some of the summary here is that we increased the pool fees, excuse me, by about 5% across the board. The utility rates for water, wastewater, stormwater are in accordance with the utility rate study that was done recently. And the system development charges are not completed yet. We're doing a study with FCS Group, the same one that did the utility rate study. So we'll continue charging the existing SDCs until that study is complete, and then we will update those fees at a later time. That should be done around July, so not too late into the year. And I did want to point out that the transportation fees that were just brought up in the last resolution, we are planning to double them again. So for a single-family residence, that amount would go monthly from $4 to $8, and so on. A continued doubling of that fee for this coming year. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. Sorry for any confusion, but Attachment A is the differences in the fees, whereas Exhibit A is the actual fee chart itself. And if you want to know what, I'll anticipate your first question, maybe. If you want to know what this will do to a single-family resident, their entire bill for utilities, that's water, wastewater, storm, and transportation. Currently, the base fee is $117, plus usage of water at $1.65 per thousand gallons. So it goes from $117.70 to $128.45. It's an increase of almost $11, about 9%. And almost $8 of that increase is due to the transportation and storm fees.
Thanks, James. An opportunity for a public comment again, anybody? Okay, Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor.
So for the street maintenance fees, I know we talked about, forgive me, I can't remember if it was at budget or if it was at a council meeting. I feel like it maybe it was at the Budget Committee meeting. But anyway. I still feel like I don't understand why a single-family home is paying more, double than someone who lives in an apartment or the mobile home park. I really feel like we could do $6 across the board. I don't really see why someone in a single-family home is paying more when we're driving on the same streets.
I think I might be able to speak to that. I think it has to do with the average trips for those uses, and based on the ITE manual, apartments have a lower trip generation than a single-family home and a town, and a mobile home. Lance is nodding, so I'm correct. So that's the reason why the street fees are based on usage of the street, on sort of the modeled ITE, the International Transportation Engineers book. And so it's just based on the trips. So that's the why.
Is that the same standard we use when we look at development? That there's not gonna be an impact when we have 72 new houses or apartments in town?
Yeah. I mean, that, Mr. Mayor, I... We're increasing the number of people who are living in those apartments, and to say that they're not gonna increase the traffic on our streets. I mean, maybe per household, I can see that on average, but you're... I don't know, we have lots of seniors that don't leave their house very often. So I don't know, they live in a single-family home, but they're gonna be paying more than somebody who goes to work and takes their kids and does all this. And because they live in an apartment, they get to pay less. I don't... I don't know. I know.
I agree with you, Counselor.
I think, I think it should be the same.
And I don't know... Obviously, I wasn't here when the street fee was put in, but I assume it was based on some methodology that goes into it. So I don't know if we change it for single-family, multifamily, and mobile home to be a flat $6, what that does to the background methodology, and the legitimacy of the fee and how the fee is calculated. You know, we could certainly look into that, I don't know if... Lance, I don't know if you would have an answer just off the top of your head, you don't have to answer it if you don't, but...
I will say, I don't, I think you've summarized the entire methodology correct. And it's not just the fees that we're talking about, when we're talking about individual fees for a single family. Depending on what your zone, that's really what we're looking at, where your zoning is, single-family versus multifamily. But this also plays a big role in our SDCs as well, because when we go to calculate SDCs, it's based on trips. So while we say, for example, the 72-unit apartment complex, well, they also paid the city like $400,000 on SDCs because of their impacts to the street, where we wouldn't be asking that of a single-family residential neighborhood. So when you use a methodology, if you'd like to go that route and charge everybody $6, let's say, for example, we'd have to go back into our methodology and input that, so we could see how that affects everything else. And so we'd be taking a step back, and that's fine, that's up to you folks. I just want you to be aware of that. We couldn't just say, "Oh, let's move it to $6," without doing that groundwork. Because we'd have to make the argument to somebody else why we did that. And that's all I'll say. I'm not gonna say it's great or not great, and that's what we have to do.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Gugilio.
Yeah, Lance, do, like, when the initial development is done on that, like, when a new neighborhood and development is done, are there SDCs that are collected on that?
Yes, for each lot, that's correct.
For each lot, okay. Mr. Mayor, I'll just add, I guess this isn't really council discussion. I mean, this is a little bit of, I mean, I don't know who this question is to, it's more of a... Maybe I'll wait, I'll wait till a council discussion on this.
Okay, that's what we're in, so go ahead.
Yeah, so I will... So to me, I think this is the second year in a row, and I know that there's been a lot of discussion around the state, like, street maintenance. And it's tough, like, I do appreciate, like, having these numbers to be able to go in and budget with, but it's also tricky, because I think that the budget process really, like, is a lot of the, like, heavy lifting work of understanding these numbers, understanding where everything's going, understanding what the budget needs are, so it's a little bit of that cart-horse, you know, chicken-egg situation. On the street maintenance fees, and considering that that is a pretty good chunk of the increase this year, this is the second year in a row we'll be doubling the street maintenance fee, or propose to double it, without really any, like, conversation. Like, I think there's been some conversation, but we really haven't dug again into that issue as much. And for me, I think we're doing a lot of groundwork to help, you know, I think there's a lot of work that's being done on how to, how to rate these streets, how to bring in public involvement. But I'm not comfortable having any type of increase until that plan is in place and the budget is in place for streets. And so I think on that piece of the budget, on the street maintenance fees, I would like to wait on that, to kind of pull that out of this, wait on that for the budget cycle, so that we have that plan in place first for how... for how streets are chosen. And then we can take a look at, okay, what's the need there? And then how are we doing that? Because there's also, we have the street maintenance speed, but there's also these plans in place for the, we have the, what's that, the urban renewal district. There's a number of things that are going at the same time. And I don't want to just say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna raise fees, and we're gonna do our urban renewal district, and we're gonna do these different things. I want to say, okay, what is our strategy for streets? And I think that that's going to take some dedicated work from us as council to say, okay, what is our funding strategy? Based now that we have, like, whenever we have the plan in place, then what's your funding strategy for that plan? So I just feel like it's premature to approve a doubling of the rates before we have that plan in place.
Mr. Mayor, can I, I just wanted to chime in on that. So if you recall, last year, in the fee schedule, we proposed to raise it, actually, I think, to $8. Through the budget process, the, the numbers in the budget assumed four, and so that, you, you guys went back down to four. The going to $8 was sort of based on initial conversations with counselors about just trying to get that, that number up. $8 is actually keeping us on track for, and this is sort of like going back in time over almost two years ago now, when council received the presentation from GRI regarding the, the rates and the pavement condition index, and then actually with our, through our utility rates analysis. In order to keep the pavement condition at its current level, meaning not improve it significantly, basically, we're, we're doing what we're doing now. So last year, it would have been $4. This year, it would be $8. And so if you don't increase it, I, I understand we're doing a lot of other things to find other revenue sources, but that's to get us to improvement. Keeping it at $8 gets us to, at least we're maintaining. And then I'll also say that if we don't have these numbers to budget, then we're not going to know what to budget. So, you know, basically, when we're putting the budget together, we're assuming a certain revenue level, which is what we did last year as well. We assumed four. If the, the fees had been approved higher, then we would have supplemented the budget, you know, done a budget supplement and had additional projects, potentially. So if it's not approved, that's fine. But we won't know what number to budget in the street budget, because we won't have those revenues to assume in the street budget.
And I think that what you could do there is you could just have, you know, two contingency plans to say, like, one at eight, one at four, and budgeting either way. One thing I just, I think generally, and I think we had this discussion around the pool just now, at the, at the work session. We've had this discussion last budget cycle. And if you just do this math, you carry this forward, eventually, we're going to have to look at what to cut. Like, we just can't keep saying it's addition, 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 addition. We cannot, as a fiscally, at least for me, who ran as a fiscally conservative council member, I cannot say every year indefinitely I'm going to keep raising rates. I'm going to keep, this is going to be my funding strategy. We're not going to ever cut on, we're not going to find any hard places to cut. Any place that we look, so when I, when I've said and when I've advocated in the past, and I advocated this a lot last year in budget cycle, and that's why I would really like to wait to the budget cycle, because I think that we want to have a full holistic conversation about where the money comes from and, and what our funding priorities are. Like, that's, to me, the issue. I, I do not want to indefinitely say I'm going to keep doubling, because I know that eight isn't the ultimate goal for streets. I know that it, it was actually, it was, it's going to be 10, and it was going to be, and then, you know, next year, you know, probably come at like 12 and 16. And so this endless addition, adding, is, is not, to me, the way forward. And so we need to take a look at it. That's, to me, why I want to say, yes, I want to budget different. I think it's good to say, okay, here's option one, here's option two at a budget cycle. This is what, if this is what the fees, fee structure. Or we can say, okay, maybe we need to cut over here so that we can prioritize what the people of our community have said that they want prioritized. And so that might mean that for a year or two, we have to prioritize something, like, we have to not budget over on this side of the, on the budget, but budget it over here. And I understand there are certain, like, funding buckets we can't touch. I understand all that stuff. But that's, to me, why I think this belongs in a holistic budget conversation with a holistic budget committee that's been appointed and approved by the city.
Giulia, just to, just to confirm what I think I heard you say. If we get $8, if we double to $8, it keeps the status quo today. Yeah, that's not a return on investment that people will have tangible results with.
Right, but it's not going backwards. I, I, so I, I hear what you're saying, but if we don't, and we're still having those conversations, we're still trying to find other ways to kind of ultimately move that significantly further. But if we don't, if we don't increase funding a little bit more, then we're not going to, we're just going to have to raise them more, potentially, in the future.
I, I understand you, and I think that's why the council's made it known that they'd like to see a priority list of projects, so we can say to the, to the community with confidence, we're doubling the street fee, and here's the equation of when you guys pay the money, what's going to have the end result. And that, this hasn't been delivered yet.
Mr. Mayor, may I just add?
Sure, go ahead.
A little bit of background. And I, I'm not trying to advocate for anything here tonight for you guys. I just want to give you a little background. The reason we're in the predicament we are now is because past councils didn't invest anything in the streets. So unfortunately, you were elected, and now you're having to carry the water of past councils. And Giulia is absolutely right. Every year that we go by, that we don't invest, we're going backwards. And it's not just, you guys won't be, it'll be your kids paying for, putting the loot. And you just need to be aware of that, that's all. I, I, and I'm not trying to advocate for any particular way of going. I just think you need to be aware of that situation.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Giulio.
I've seen these numbers. I know what the eventual, like, if we want to actually fix the streets with this model, without cutting things, without prioritizing things, it's like a $40 a month fee, all right? And I'm not going to continue down the path of a $40 to a $40 a month fee without, now, I understand that's not what's being asked for now, like, I'm going to make that distinction. I understand that. What's being asked for now is to say, let's maintain the current levels. I understand that. But what I'm, and I'm not saying I'm a no. I'm not even saying I'm a no, once we have the budget conversation. But I want to see the list, I want to see the priority, I want to see what we've asked for as a council delivered before we are going to approve, in this budget cycle, the, the fee schedule for this year, for, when it comes to just specifically streets.
Counselor Sims?
I, I do feel it's pretty important to see this priority list and where we are, but I am really concerned about our roads. Our infrastructure is terrific. And I think if we kick this down the road, you know, I don't want to see, I don't like seeing fee increases either. But I do think we're going to need to fund these streets. And I think if we keep pushing this off, we're just gonna, we're gonna move the needle to the left and be in worse shape. But I just, I think we have to fund these streets. And, you know, I'm, I'm for the $4 pay, the increase, just because I'd like to see it in the budget. I'd have, I'd like to have that money in the pocket to plan some road improvements, just to main that, maintain that PCI index. And, but I would like to see a plan on what roads we're going to do and how we're going to do it. But I think, I think we need to have the money to do it first, so, that's my thoughts.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Patty.
Yeah, Giulia, and this may be a question for Lance, I don't know. Where are we at, kind of, on producing this list and priority chart? That's kind of, you know, digestible for the public and us, and something that we can share, so that we can better inform the public of where their dollars are going? I'd like to kind of know what the timetable is on that.
So actually, I'm hoping, I just sent something out earlier today. I've got a meeting scheduled next week with staff. The idea is, through the month of April, sharing kind of the 101, the basic education, helping people understand streets. We have, we're, GRI is working on, or has a list. We've got some, some ranked by, we're not, we're sort of trying to actually get, move away from PCI, because that's very confusing, and just sort of focus on poor, fair, good conditions. So, you know, that seems more manageable. And kind of sharing with people, here are the, the roads in each, each condition. The concept is essentially that the things that are in good condition, we want to maintain, we don't want to go further backwards. And so there's a sort of basic level of investment that we need to make to maintain our current roads. And it's sort of, it, it's moving away from the PCI concept, per se, you know, just like, so that PCI may not be exactly the same, but the, the general overall condition of roads will be improving. And then really focusing in on, okay, here are the roads that are in poor condition, and here's what it takes to improve those roads. Here's a list of these roads. Here's what GRI, am I saying that right? GRI recommends, and here's what the cost is. And there's, you know, certain number of roads that they recommend, but kind of anything is on the table. And I think we're proposing that conversation in June. I mean, so it's, it's, we're not going to have that conversation in, done by the time we're doing our budget. But what we would be budgeting is, we're going to do this many roads that's going to have gone through a public process that will be, have done by June, July of this year, so that we'll be not necessarily identifying the specific roads in the budget, but we'll know the amount of money that we're budgeting in the budget.
Okay. And just to confirm that I have this right. So we're going to have some kind of public awareness campaign, and then by July, we will have a list that we can give to the public and share as select officials of, hey, this is the list of projects. This is where your dollars are going. And, and this is, I mean, people need that predictability.
Yeah, that's the, that's the current plan that I have. That's the current plan. But even before that, there'll be opportunities to, to share and get feedback from the, the public on kind of that list, so that, that there'll be, there, there'll be input on, here's the, the roads that are in poor condition. What's, you know, and then some, some rankings of like, well, these are really heavily traveled, these, you know, kind of, we're going to give our thoughts on that, so that a road that has five homes on it, or, I guess, our recommendation is that a road that has five homes on it probably shouldn't raise to the same level as a road that has 100 homes on it. And, you know, that there's, or, you know, traffic volume. So that there'll be opportunities, a couple of opportunities for public input throughout that process to get to a list. And I believe July, I don't want you guys to quote me on that. I didn't, I thought I had printed it out, but I didn't. So I think July is kind of the timeframe that we're targeting. But right around there, we would have then a list of priorities. That's the, that's the goal.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor.
I apologize, I didn't think about this beforehand. So if you don't have this information, James, it's okay. So what is the, by raising, raising the rates, what is the estimated, or do you know what the estimated amount of money would be approximately? I mean, I guess it's just double, right? Just double what we've, what we receive from that? And I apologize. What I'm thinking is, kind of along the lines of what Counselor Giulio was saying, is, well, okay, yes, we need to raise the rates, but is it possible to shift money from other places before we do something like this? And I know this is a conversation we've been having for a while, but we also talked about going out for raising, like, the gas tax and seeing if people were amendable to that. Because I kind of just keep going back to lots of thoughts, but, you know, we, we're raising the rate, but you're not, like, there's going to be a significant amount of people in the community that are not going to see any, any improvement in their, in where they live, per se. And I think that is probably part of the education campaign as well, is to let people know that it's not just about your street, it's about the streets as, as a whole. But that doesn't necessarily make it any easier to swallow when you're paying $8 and not seeing any improvement in your neighborhood. So.
Sure. I'll, I'll mention a few things that have come to mind. Right now, we have two levers we can pull. One is the local gas tax, which you mentioned. Right now, we have three cents a gallon. I think raising each cent, I think it equates to about $60,000. And the other is this, this transportation fee that we're talking about now. And I know that doubling sounds drastic, but when the fee starts so low, you, you can't just raise it by standard inflation numbers and get to a meaningful number. It's just, it's really low right now. Outside of that, you're going to have to get a loan, and you're going to have to get a, you know, a pretty good-sized loan to make a meaningful difference that you want the community to see. So I, I do estimate that a $10 million loan, and I'm not going to say how many streets that funds, it depends on what kind of streets you're doing, what kind of work you're doing. But a $10 million loan would need about, the residential fee would need to be about $13, $13 to $14 a month to fund a $10 million loan. And to answer your question about shifting money from elsewhere, yes, that's possible, but only from the general fund. That's the only place you can take money from, to fund streets. And that's a, it's got other priorities in there, as you know, so that, that would be a place where you could move things around.
And I'll just, I, I guess I want to add or stress. I mean, so we're, we're looking, and these are all the things that we're sort of, this is, we're looking at all these things and discussing all these things and trying to have something that makes sense before we take it to the public. But it's not just a one thing, right? I mean, as James said, if we were to do a bond or a loan bonded based on the, the rates, that would allow us to do a bang for the buck. But we're also looking at urban renewal. We're looking at potential grants and, and other things that we could potentially use to, to leverage funds. But at the end of the day, $4 isn't going to sustain what we need. $40 would sustain what we need, $60 would sustain what we need, but that's not realistic. And so what we're saying is sort of a modest increase now will continue to allow us to kind of get, get the funds and leverage this, so we can do something meaningful. And that's essentially what we're trying to accomplish.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor.
Okay, so that, but that's for, like, residential. I took my paper. But we've had, we've had business owners come and talk about, you know, the increases and, and what they're having to pay. And the increases for them, they're going from $40 to $80. Like that, I mean, we're talking, you know, $4 to $8. That's not very much, but is, obviously, there's a calculation in everything, but... I don't know, that, that seems like a significant increase for them. But I don't pretend to understand those calculations and how you get to that, so.
Yeah, it's the larger, larger commercial operations are at the $80 fee, and there's 17 of those in the city. 17 customers would be paying the $80 a month, so this is the largest, larger one.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Patty.
Yeah, kind of back to my line of questioning earlier about the list. This is going to, like, if I was living on Fifth or Sixth, and I got this rate increase, I'd be pretty fired up. And so here's my thing. With this list that I'm asking for, this helps me explain to that constituent, hey, no, we're not doing your road, we're not doing anything with your road, and this is why. Here's what we are trying to do as far as fund your project, though. That's why I want this list, and that's what I want it for everybody else up here, is so that we can go ahead and come back to the public and explain why this is going up. So I keep asking this question, and I, I will support this tonight if it goes forward for a vote as far as these rate increases, but we need this list. a vote as far as these rate increases, but we need this list, we need something that's digestible to the public, so that we can go ahead and explain these things. So that, that's where I'm at tonight.
Hundred percent.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Gilio.
I, I just, I really want to just stress to my fellow counselors, maybe just to Counselor Warr, and the mayor. The, this isn't, I understand that it's being portrayed as a very like last minute, like this is the only opportunity we're going to have right now type of a thing, but it's just not the case, right? I'm not saying we're going to kick this down the road to the next budget cycle. I'm saying I want to kick this particular vote on the street maintenance fees till once we have that list. That's all I'm saying. All I'm saying is, before I'm willing to vote for this, I need that list. And we've been asking for this list, and I understand that, that the ball's moving and I'm, I am, I'm, I'm really appreciative of that. However, I think that a holistic conversation with the Budget Committee, with that list imminent, very close in, in, in May, is going to be a better time to have this conversation. I, and, and this is just the other thing, like, in general, like, I understand that the main place that we can take is the, is the general fund. I do understand that. And that's what needs to be prioritized. What we have to take a look at is some hard look at some of what we are funding in the general fund and say, how do we prioritize that for the long term? As well as find other, other funding opportunities like, you know, urban renewal, bonds, things like that. But all of this is just, yes, I understand four dollars doesn't feel like a lot, but it's, this is just cumulative. Everything's going up. Everybody's expenses is going up. And we were here last week, we had Paula, Paula, who was just sharing the rate we approved, I understand we didn't do it, but we approved, and, and the impact that that has on, on the elderly community, right? These, these are people, people are increasingly living in debt, increasingly living from paycheck to paycheck. And so we have a responsibility, knowing the fiscal reality outside of our, outside of this room, in our own living rooms, to say, we have to make hard cuts, just like everyone is forced to make hard cuts right now, everyone. And so that's, that's the reason why I want to wait. I'm not saying no, I'm just saying, let's wait on this section and say, hey, let's have two options, one with this funded, one without this funded, and we can make that A, B choice at the Budget Committee.
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Petty.
Go ahead.
I'd like to respond to that. So the reason for me that that's not tangible is because what does the general fund fund, right? Public safety, police. For me, I'm not in favor of making any cuts to that right now. In fact, I want to increase their budget. I want to see a school resource officer, I want, I want those things. I would rather see those things in our community than more funding for roads. I realize this is necessary to, at some point, adequately maintain our roads, I hope, right? And so for me, that's why not having that conversation right now is feasible for me.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Gilio.
So I'm just going to respond, yeah, that's, that's my point. My point is, is that we're not willing to make cuts, right? We're not willing to cut up, we're not willing to, we're wanting to add an SRO, we're wanting to add the funding for the court, we're wanting to say, okay, we're going to have to get to a yes on the pool, we're having to, we just added last year, a new administrative position, we added, we're always adding, we're always adding. And that's not how budgets work. Budgets do not work that way. And what I've heard from constituents, what we have all said up here many times on this dais is to say, hey, for us, what we hear from people, the number one concern is roads. The number one concern consistently is roads. And we have, and we have not, and, and so I think that this is, this is the process, for example, and, and what you just brought up, Counselor Petty, I think it's a great conversation, this is the conversation that needs to happen. And that's where the Budget Committee comes in. That's why we have people outside of this room, us included, a part of that holistic conversation to say, what are we cutting? What are we keeping? Or are we just going to indefinitely add to the budget and hope, right, that it's not going to negatively impact just people where they're at?
Gotcha. That's, that's, Counselor Gilio, I ran for City Council the first time because of the roads. And that was my first impetus behind getting out here to try and make a difference. And over those years I was on council, I saw very limited movement. And the same streets that were my inspiration to run for council are still in the same condition or worse than they were at the time that I ran for council. So yes, we've worked very hard this last cycle to recruit members of the Budget Committee. And years past, the Budget Committee has been not as robust, doing an examination of the budget a lot that I would wish that I've done, hopefully that'll change this year, but I want the Budget Committee, as members of the community, to have an input and weigh in on what we're going to look at, to include a complete examination of the general fund. The general fund's not just there for a rubber stamp to keep status quo of the, of the services we have, especially if those services call into question from the community. So I want to, I support what you're asking, Counselor Gilio, and I want to see the Budget Committee have more say in what happens and more direction. And that's only next month, so that's where I'm at.
Mr. Mayor, may I, may I?
Yes, go ahead.
I just want to add one small thing here. I think we've been talking about this list, this list, this list. We could make the list tomorrow. The list is not the issue. I could bring you a list of 300 streets in our community that all need work, but we don't know which streets we can do if we don't know how much money we can spend on them. And that's, that's what we're trying to get at. I think what this does, if James does not have the numbers, I think doubling it brings it up to like 600,000 a year for streets. This year, we had 800,000. We didn't spend it all because we, we haven't figured this out yet. But the, bringing you the streets is the easy part. It's figuring out which streets to pave or reconstruct, but we can't even figure that out unless we know how much money we can spend, and that's the key. And that's where we're at, we're, we're loggerheads here. We're here before you, trying to get a double, you know, and that sounds a lot. And again, I'm not advocating one way or the other, but I want you to understand that we don't know where to go and which streets we can bring in before you and let you decide how to spend the money, if you'd like, but that's really where we're at. I mean, I know the streets that all need to be done, but I don't know how much money we're going to have available to us to actually mill or overlay or reconstruct. And that's kind of the dilemma that we're faced with.
Mr. Mayor. And just to that point, I, I don't disagree with that point, I'm just saying that, what he, what Lance just laid out, deciding how much money should go towards roads, budget towards roads, is the job of the Budget Committee. I mean, that, that, that is the heart of what the Budget Committee is for, is making those determinations. And so I don't think that we should just shortcut that process and make those determinations now.
Mayor, may I ask a question of James?
Go ahead.
How hard would it be to do a two scenario budget like Counselor Gilio was suggesting?
Yeah, with two different revenue scenarios, we were just budgeted in, you know, improving roads. We're not declaring which roads we're going to do in the budget process. We were just, at, when the Budget Committee decides, they could decide which scenario to choose. But we're just going to put the money in a couple of line items for improving roads. No part of the budget process would we have street names or, I mean, that, that could be done, but it hasn't been done in the past, I'll just say.
Yeah, it's, I, just to answer that question, it was actually in there in the past. Last year, for example, the, the names of the roads were in there. And I think that's what we're trying to say, is there's a little bit of a shift from that in this, in this process, is kind of what you're saying? Like, or?
I, I think we have listed them in the narratives and, I mean, it's not a, we've listed them in the narratives, we've told you the intent of this is what we would like to do, but from a budgetary authority, it's an amount of money that's been budgeted.
Yeah. Overall, we, we know that the need is greater than the resources, however much the fee is, the need is going to be greater than the resources.
You're right, Counselor. We generally put which streets we are going to do, but then we've come to this loggerhead of, we need to have more open communication with the citizens in what we're doing. And so right now, we've kind of taken a step back until we figure out that process. And that's, and then once we figure out the process, we'll know what roads the council wants to do and we'll press on. But again, we'll need to know how much we want to spend.
Yeah, and, and kind of getting to what Lance said earlier, why we wanted to do the fee schedule now versus after the budget process was to tell us more definitively what money we might have. So we'll, we could do some scenarios and say, okay, if we raised it to this much, we could do these roads, if we raised it to that much, we could do these roads. And we could, we could do that, but.
I, if I could interject, I, that, I think that, just like you were saying with the justification of why we came to these, it gives us more of a, like, okay, I'm sorry, I'm verbally processing, but it seems arbitrary right now to just double. I know that we need to get to an amount that we can sustain maintenance and whatnot, but there's nothing, there's no backing to say, this is what we're going to do if we raise it to eight dollars, this is what we're going to do. And these are the, this is what you're going to see. So if we have a scenario, if we have two scenarios that says, this is what, if we keep it the same, this is what we can do with the money. If we increase it to eight dollars and then we have the buy-in from the community members that are on the Budget Committee, then I'll absolutely vote for that. And then we can have, we can say definitively, and, and I'm not saying that those roads are going to be done, but these are suggested, like, this is what we could do if we increase it. But to be able to back that up with some information is helpful to make those decisions too. So I know we're going around in circle of, if we know what money we have, we can do the roads. It's like, well, if we know what roads we're doing, we can, we can get the money, but.
Yeah, and I think that, I mean, so just to be clear, these fees wouldn't go into effect until July 1, correct? So we're, it's essentially, we're not saying they're going to raise, the budget would be adopted and that information would be identified as, as best it could through the budget process. So, I mean, I think we just need to know what to assume from revenue standpoint, and it sounds like there may be a desire to kind of have some, some scenarios.
Yeah, you can have two columns, James. One, assuming this, the status quo, and then the doubling, and have that determination of what the pot of money would be at the end of the day, because you're right, the budget, it's nothing until it's adopted.
And I, I'm, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not, I'm, I'm not against it per se, but I'm kind of in the camp that I think I would, I want to have this conversation at the Budget Committee. There's more opportunities to kind of talk about it, talk through it, and then have more input from, you know, it's a smaller group of community members, but it is a group of community members that care and that want to be there and that are dedicated to being part of the conversation. And I think that it's a better conversation than we could have just the, you know, as the council.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Petty.
Yeah, real quick, I like the idea of having two choices at the Budget Committee, but what I also want to see, and since we, we're going to know the amount, is what projects would be done with that money? Because at that point, we should know, based on what Lance said, we can have this list tomorrow. So that's what I want to see, what would be done with the increase.
So just to clarify, we can have that list tomorrow, but it's not going to be based on public input and desire. So what we still need to go through is, because like you said, there's, you know, 300 roads that could, could be done.
Right.
And so we might not have a fully vetted public list by the time the budget is done.
Yeah, I don't expect.
Okay.
But you could have a list of the 10 worst roads in the community. Pretty easy.
But, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor.
Can I speak to that? That's, from my understanding, is there, this is, this is where I kind of like get a little frustrated, because that's not even going to touch the worst roads in state. Like, the money that we have, we're never intending even, even raising it eight dollars and wanting, intending to fix one of our worst roads when I, but that's the intention of the council, and several of us want to see how do we get to that? How do we get there to be able to fix?
And we've heard you. I mean, I think that is, that was the GRI proposal. I don't think that, I mean, Ida Street, for example, is one of the worst roads and it's being fixed. So while that is what you heard, that is not, that's not necessarily true, because we're actually proposing to try to do maintenance, but also trying to do some road improvements. But we're not going to be able to, I mean, I guess you, you could, if we fix the 10 worst roads, then there's a lot of roads that are going to not get maintained and, and do what they need to do, or there's, I mean, you're not going to be able to afford to do the 10 worst roads in one year or two. You know, but we can certainly say with this much increase, we'll be able to do some maintenance and do some, some more road improvements, but then we'll have a list of, here's 10 roads that are all in the same shape, or 30 roads that are all in the same shape, they're all going to cost roughly the same amount, which one, you know, and that's where you, you know, we look through traffic volumes, you know, whether or not there's other things that are going on with those streets, and we might be able to, you know, weed some out, but ultimately, at the end of the day, that's where the public and council can, can have some influence.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
One more thing to that point, Julia, you were talking about the informational campaign for the roads. I'd love to, if we can have some acknowledgement about those roads, and I, I don't know how you're planning on doing that, but kind of explaining, because when people say, oh, you're going to do maintenance on the roads, what, it's kind of like that diagram of like, what you think is going to happen, what the cities think is going to happen, you know, all these different scenarios. Everyone has a, has an idea in their head of what that looks like, but to say like, okay, we know that these are bad roads, and this is what it would take in order to fix that road.
Yeah, I wish that we had it ready to share, because I, I think that, and what I want to do, and just timing wise, I'd love to be able to have a work session, and maybe we do a special work session or something like that with council before we share it publicly, but we, you know, we want to kind of let you guys see what the campaign is, so that you can understand that, because I think it is, I think it's going to address those concerns.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Gilio.
Yeah, what I would like to see is kind of a scenario A, scenario B, kind of what's been laid out here. And maybe you're not able to give the specific names of the roads, because there is that public involvement that needs to happen in June or July, but you're like, okay, this is a rough, this can do, you know, three to four, a, you know, poor streets, or you kind of have a different, you just have like an idea of, okay, what does this price get you, what does this price get you? And then what I would like, on a personal level, just because I think that, to me, this was, I mean, this is, is to maybe have that work session, the one that you just, you just laid out, like what the plan is for public outreach, what those streets are that we're going to go get feedback. I'd like to see that before I vote on the budget. Just so I can say, okay, maybe we haven't decided on the exact list, because we do need the public involvement, but I just want to make sure I'm, I'm good with the plan of how we want to roll it out, you know, before we, we, we choose one scenario or the other. That's where I'm at. But either way, I think that two scenarios are going to be good.
Mr. Mayor. Counselor Sims.
I do like the two scenario idea with, you know, the four and the eight dollar street fee. I definitely would like to see a list of suggested streets for each, you know, the four dollar fee and the eight dollar fee, so I can, you know, I think that'll help, also help everybody when they're trying to make their decisions. But, you know, I, I'm the engineer type, I want to see an engineer's input on what streets should be fixed, myself, as a suggestion, but that's something we can always talk about and discuss, what streets to be fixed, because I tend to go the engineering route myself, so.
Okay. Agreed. Counselor Sims. I'm going to say one more thing and then we're going to move on. So in regards to the Budget Committee, I think in years past, as I said, the Budget Committee was kind of taken over by the elected officials, and hopefully this year, I want to set that aside. As members of the Budget Committee, we, as elected officials, need to take a backseat to the citizens on the Budget Committee. And so I'd like to have that happen this year, and really, that gives them an opportunity to direct the budget, to have way in on what our money should be spent. And so I'm looking forward to having that take place this year. With that, do we have direction? Are you good, or?
Uh, this is a resolution, so we need council to vote on it. And what I think I may be hearing is a motion to amend the resolution to, to basically keep the street fee as it is for now, and then you would vote on the amended resolution if that motion were to pass.
Okay, I'll entertain resolutions.
So we have to amend. So, we have to amend it?
Amendments.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Gilio.
Yeah, I will, I'll make a motion to amend Resolution 1098, amending the fiscal year fee schedule to remove the proposed adjustments to the street fees, street maintenance fees. Is that right? Did I say that right? Do you think that that's going to work?
I was whispering to Alyssa, so I didn't hear what you said.
I think, I think I did that right, I was like, so I want to make a motion to amend Resolution 1098 to remove the adjustments to the street fee, fee schedules for fiscal year 2024 through 25. Does that work?
Yes.
Seconded.
All right.
Okay, it's been moved to second to make the amendment, as Counsel Gilio stated, and it's on the record, correct, somewhere?
Yes.
Any further discussion? All's in favors of Resolution 1098 as amended for the fiscal year 2025 fee schedule.
Sorry, we're doing the amendment.
You're just.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, that's right, just the amendment. All's in favor of the amendment for Resolution 1098.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries now. That's it, or are we good?
Now, you need to vote on the amended resolution.
Correct.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Counsel.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 1098, adopting fees and charges for various city services as amended.
Okay. Seconded. Counsel Paty, seconded. Counsel Oert, motion. Any more further discussion on that? All's in favors of Resolution 1098 as amended. Say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Communication from city staff?
I know that James, I, sorry, I had, I lost my sheet with my notes. I was going to remind council of the Chamber Awards Lunch on Thursday. I know Counselor Sims and Counselor Oert are attending. If others want to attend, and you would like me to purchase a ticket, let me know. And then, James was going to give you a status update as well.
James Brand, Finance Director. There was a question posed to me a while ago about the House Bill 4210 passed in 2020 about court remissions and the impact of that on our municipal court and the revenue. So, I wanted to bring a little update on that. I went to a GFOA conference recently with my peers and asked around, we, there was actually a session for financial directors that oversee courts, there were quite a few of us around the state. It kind of falls to us naturally, I guess, but there was some angst in the room over the topic. Just as a review, in 2020, House Bill 4210 was passed in the Oregon Legislature. It was about fines from conduct giving rise to driving privilege restrictions and suspensions. So, basically, it revealed, it repealed some Oregon statutes that suspended driving privileges for failure to pay traffic fines. The fines were forgiven, the ones that were still outstanding, so that people could get their licenses back. And Staten, at that time, received two lists of names that we were instructed to forgive and any outstanding debt on those. There was 197 names on that list, the total amount to forgive was 97,500, and some of those were already paid, so we ended up writing off $82,000. That was the unpaid balances at the time. My peers, in, in relation to this, had some comments, frustration about the time spent, work done in the courtroom and in admin processing everything. These were budgeted revenues that were lost in those cases, but there's nothing that can be done to recuperate that. It came to my attention that apparently there is an activist group that is trying to eliminate, I can't confirm this, but trying to eliminate as many traffic fines as they can. That's one of the things I heard. For me, I guess a lesson learned for this is maybe not to book as much revenue as we do. When we get a fine, we immediately book it as revenue, 100%. We may not collect that money, so that's a, it's a separate issue, but when the fine is, is given, that's called revenue at the time. But at the end of the year, we have an, an opportunity to adjust the books, and you can do, you know, bad debt expense write-off for some of that. So, we do that on an annual basis, but we probably didn't write it down enough, because a lot of this debt does go uncollected. So, in the future, I'll be more mindful of that and probably write off a higher percentage of that debt that's not been collected at the time.
So, James, that's not a one-time thing?
As far as we know, it is a one-time thing. It was retro, it went back to, as far back as 20...
2014, I think, is what I recall.
Yeah, that sounds about right. But I, I don't think there's any future known impact to this. It was, it was a one-time write-off.
Okay.
I, I will say that I brought this to the attention of Sean Tate with SMAC. In part, Jordan had written a note, just kind of questioning about potential future impacts to our courts, especially if we're taking on more cases and types of crimes. And so, he kind of reached out to the SMAC membership to see if they had similar issues. I haven't heard back on that, but, so we've, we've put it on their radar, and I know he was going to be speaking with Representative Deal about it this week, I think, maybe even. So, I guess just to, to counter, if there's sort of activists that are on one side, at least we can be a little bit more proactive of paying attention to possibilities that could be coming down, coming down the lane, if you will.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Oert.
I, to James's point about, because it's not just the money, right? It's the time, it's, it is, but it's not just the money and the fines, it's the time that we spend administratively in the courts, like, all that is negated because of those. So, that's kind of a concern of mine, if we're moving forward with our court system, and then, and then you're saying that most of the debt is never collected.
I wouldn't say most, but it's higher percentage than any other type of debt that we would have.
Okay.
Or amount owed to us, yes. Some utility bills go unpaid, but very, very, very few, a much, much smaller percentage than the court fines.
Okay. I, I just think that's something we need to consider when we're adding on our, our court and how much that's going to cost. Because if it's not going to pay for itself, then that's more money out of our general fund.
Yep. Counsel Paty?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to go ahead and remind everybody that April 11th is going to be the Public Safety Forum at 6:30. I, I saw some, some Facebook traffic, I got on there the other day, I regretted it instantly. You know, I, I just want to go ahead and, and make a statement of support for the Police Department. You know, I have a really important job in this community, keeping the public safe, and while waiving at people is super important, that's not the most critical function, and that would not be my first priority for our public safety officers in the community. And I just want to go ahead and, and, you know, give them some grace as they go out there and do a really hard job. And so, with that, I hope that if anybody does have some, some concerns and some things that we can work with and try to make them better, please be present for that, and, and show up and let them hear that, so that they can improve. And that's all I'll say on that.
Julia, when it comes to agenda items that potentially increase residents' expenses, can we do a better job advertising that?
Yes.
I'm sitting there thinking about Polly Graves that came last meeting, and her unawareness of the fee increase, and the burden that puts on her. And now, we're sitting here talking about increasing the fees again, and I want to make sure that the community has an opportunity to weigh in on this. Whether they come or not, I want to make sure it's advertised correctly. And we have to do a better job at showing the financial impact on people's wallets when it comes to council decisions, because people ask me all the time, well, I didn't know about that. And I look at the advertisement of the meetings, and I try to be a fair analysis about it, where, where is it spelled out, where is it in bold, somehow do a better job to say, hey, here's your opportunity, here's how many chances you had, talk about this. Because in turn, in theory, what I think will happen is that, hopefully, those chairs will be filled, and council would have a better time making a decision that weighs heavily on people's pocket, but if they get the feedback on how it personally affects them. And so, I'm hoping we can do a little bit better. I don't know what that looks like, I don't know how it's communicated, but just, let's, let's think about it, if we could.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Gilio.
I, you know, and I would even like to maybe even look at like, what's, what's an ordinance that we might even be able to pass that says something along the lines of like, some sort of notice requirement of like, the way it looks, in terms of just, maybe it's not, isn't even an ordinance level, but I, I even just think with like, water bill or something like that, just having just a fee, like, a notice of a hearing on your fees, like, it's something that's really clear about, this is going to make you pay more come, come be a part of it. Like, if it's, if it's included the right way in someone's bill or in, on Facebook, I think it should elicit a response, because everyone cares about when their bills go up.
Anything else? All right, let's call it a night. Thank you.